All right, the time is 5:30. I will call to order the committee of the whole for November 10th, 2025. Clerk, vote, could you please do the roll?
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Pelley Van Ooglu?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Councilmember Spatterford?
Present.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
All members present.
Great. Next, we're on to the minutes. Vice President Carter?
I will make a motion to approve the October 27th minutes as presented.
Okay, we have proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Next, we are on to public comment on agenda items. You'll have up to three minutes at the podium if you would like to speak on any of the agenda items tonight, and if you could please state your name for the record. We have no takers. So then we are going to move on to item five, discussion action. Item B, a resolution to reappoint Chelsea Dowler to the Lansing member for the Capital Area Transportation Authority Board for a term to expire September 30th, 2028. She is not here. This is a reappointment. So is there any discussion on the reappointment of Chelsea? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I will make a motion for the reappointment of Chelsea Dowler, City of Lansing member to Capital Area Transportation Authority Board, term to expire September 30th, 2028.
Okay, proper motion in place. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. All right. Next, we are on to item C, which is a resolution to set a public hearing to amend Chapter 294, extending the eligibility for retirement service credits for fire and police departments. I'm going to... This item here is, I think the city attorney's going to speak on?
Yes.
Perfect.
Happy to. I won't speak to the specific policy implications, but it should be fairly plain. All this does is for the chief of police department and chief of fire department, we have a joint police and fire retirement system for those employees of the city. The chiefs of those two departments, if they, the way that it currently works, if a person that is within that retirement system and is eligible to receive pension through that system ascends from not being the chief to being the chief, then they get to continue earning service credits into that pension system. However, they remain capped at 25 years of service credit. They cannot accrue any more than that. What this does is in order to, and I think it's a response to, I think everybody here has seen, the last several police chiefs have been sort of elevated, and then they stick around for about 18 to 24 months, and then they hit their 25 and they retire, and then go get another job elsewhere because that's what it makes sense to do. This would allow a person who ascends from being a member that is not the chief to becoming the chief, continue to accrue credits up to 30 years, and that's all that it does.
And then, just so we clarify this, Greg?
Yep.
This would be for people that have spent their entire career here at Lansing through our system, not someone that came from somewhere else?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be... I'll back up. They don't have to have spent their entire career, but they have to have been an active member employed by the police department or by the fire department at the time that they are promoted to chief. So if somebody comes in to Lansing from another jurisdiction and starts their career here as chief, they aren't eligible for the police and fire retirement system to begin with, so they slot into the other pension mechanisms.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the city attorney? Councilman Jackson?
Just curious where this originated from?
Can you turn your microphone?
Thanks. Just curious where this originated from?
It was a request by the mayor, I think. Well, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I talked to the police chief enough. Rob, I think he would like to continue working here, but it's very difficult. It's difficult to continue doing that from a financial perspective if you know that you can retire, draw a pension, and then go continue working elsewhere. I think that answers the question. I'm putting a little bit of my own observations on there, though.
Is this, that goes to 30 only for chiefs, am I understanding?
Only for chiefs, and for both police and fire, yes.
Okay. And the idea, as you said, is so that people would be less inclined to leave at 25 years?
Correct. I will say, yeah, I've watched enough, and I don't know if you've ever been to either Police and Fire Retirement Board, or if you've spent a lot of time talking to police officers and firefighters, but it is, I mean, the numbers really almost always favor leaving, even if you would like to stay for a variety of reasons, because you cannot touch that pension until you leave, and you've still got working years, so.
Councilman Hussein?
Yeah, I'm actually appreciative of this. I don't think this is a solution in search of a problem. I think we've really had an issue keeping some of our, you know, absolute best chiefs in the past because they have to make what our financial considerations for them, their family, and their future. So I'm actually happy to see this. Just a couple, and this may be a dumb question. Would this apply retroactively to a fire chief that has stayed on past 25 years and is pulling a pension from the city now?
No.
Okay, would not?
No, it could not because that person would be in active retirement status, so it could not be an active employee at the time that this goes into effect.
Okay, perfect. And it, you know, might seem like small potatoes, but I'm assuming we looked at financial implications, particularly if it pertained to funded liability over the next 10 to 20 years. Did the pension board have any say on this? Did they review this about this?
I do not know. I know that the question was posed to an actuary to figure out what that cost is. I don't know what that cost is off the top of my head.
Okay.
That's a...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Spatterford?
Two things. To Councilmember Hussein's question too, there is a cap in, I'm sure you know this, but just for the record, there's a cap in the clause that states that the pension cannot be more than 110% of the base pay, so there is a little bit of a actuarial buffer there on that. But I did have a question, and this is more just a policy question. Do we not have any mechanisms to allow a retiree to continue working, you know, in some public sector environments? They can retire and then contract back or work back without accruing pension credit? I'm in favor of this, I'm just more curious.
That's a good question. There's one, so there are two things. One, because the way that our pension is set up, it's very difficult for someone to retire, draw their pension, then come back and work here for us doing the same thing.
Okay. The answer can be no, I was just...
Yeah. That's extremely complicated and puts us at risk of losing a bunch of other legal protections that we have for our pension system. And then there are other options that exist, like you may have heard of drop deferred retirement, and there's ways to accrue more money, but those are actually very complicated to implement, and I don't think we necessarily need them, those you have to implement, implement system-wide. And that's not, I don't think, that would be a solution in search of a problem.
Well, I agree with Councilmember Hussein, this is not a solution in search of a problem. I think we've watched time and time again, losing good talent because of the way the system's set up, so thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice President Carter?
Yes, I will make a motion for the resolution to set a public hearing, amend Chapter 294, extending eligibility for retirement services credits for fire and police departments on November 17.
Proper motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Next, we are on to item D, a resolution to set a public hearing for the Parks and Rec Master Plan 26 through 2030. We have Brett here from the Parks Department to give us a presentation on the master plan.
With me also, I have Mike here from Spicer Group, who was a key member of the team from Spicer that helped put this together as well. So I'm going to take you through the plan here a little bit. Again, the goal here, we have been, we're looking on the 15th to wrap this up with this council, and to be able to get this approved and get this in, we do have a public hearing set in the notice pending tonight's vote, but to set the public hearing and to have that on December 15th. So with that, I will turn your attention to page three, and that will be our first slide here. Advance that, yes. So this is just an overview of the input that we had on that. We had the online survey. We had four open houses, one in each of the wards. We're setting that 30-day public review. We have had the public meetings at Park Board, and then we also had Park Board review, and then we'll have that public hearing at council on December 15th there. In terms of what we look at through the five-year master plan, we always look at the other plans that we have. Again, ours focuses on a number of things, but really Parks and Recreation, how does that incorporate the other plans, such as the citywide master plan, the non-motorized transportation plan, especially how it exists with our River Trail system and our connections there. We take a look at the AARP plan, and also then the water trails, and you see a couple of them there. We've had an increased focus on not only our Greenways Trail, and we've been able to increase that in terms of mileage and connections with the Lansing River Trail, but also with our Waterways Trails on the Red Cedar and the Grand River Trail. And then again, the Tri-County, how does our trail system and our network connect to other areas? And we've been able to address that really to the south now, where you are able to go from Turner Dodge at the north end of town, you're able to go all the way out really to Dark Container. And then again, from the Alfreda Schmidt Community Center, you will be able to connect to Lake Lansing and to, out into Meridian Township. So there has really been a focused connection in how we connect our communities through non-motorized trail paths. This is really referring to page 55, and I just wanted to emphasize how blessed we are here in Lansing with the park system that we have. So the national average for parkland for every 1,000 residents is 9.2. We're at 17.3, almost 17.4. So we are very blessed. Lansing has always loved its parks. Some of that is, we have a lot of areas along the two rivers that we are able to use for parkland, but this really doesn't even include a lot of the trail system that we have there. So, again, Lansing, well above the national average in terms of parkland for the number of residents that we have. This really goes into page 60 through 65 of the master plan. It really lists all of our grants that we have received throughout the years. And so 52 grants closed in our history for $9.5 million. So why do we have the CIP budget? Part of this is to match those funds with the trust fund dollars, for instance. And the trust fund came in, and this is where the oil and gas rights for the state of Michigan had those, where we were able to use those for either acquisition or development of parkland. And oftentimes, you see us coming to this body looking for approval. Most recently, we had the $400,000 for the River Trail lots approved, and that is right along by Francis Park there. So we really want to be able to match our capital improvement project dollars in the CIP against grant dollars that we get from the state, or from the feds, or other grants that we have. Next up, just a little bit of questions here, some highlights, I think, from them. This one really stood out to me in terms of when we asked how frequently people use city parks. And in the last year, almost 70% had gone more than 10 times to a park. So, again, not only do we have a lot of parkland, individuals are getting out and using that. They enjoy getting out to the parks, they enjoy the parks that they have, whether those are neighborhood parks, whether those are destination parks. But going more than 10 times in a year, I think with over 70% of our population is a really good statistic. In terms of our trails, respondents, you know, we ask them, how often are you using the Lansing River Trail? And this was one that 40% of the respondents were saying that they use the trail daily. So again, the popularity of the River Trail, we talked about those connections out there, but this is, really, this is probably our most popular park, is the Lansing River Trail. You are able to connect to it throughout many areas of the city, and to be able to use that for either transportation or for recreation and leisure. You know, we see a lot of both, and so that is something that will continue to be a focus for us in this master plan, is the ways that we can connect in the future to different areas of the city through the Lansing River Trail. This would be on page 85. We're really talking about, what was the focus of the meetings? And the Lansing Park Board really wanted to look at connectivity. How do we connect people within our park system? How do we have parks that are available to everyone, whether that be through a non-motorized network, whether that be through the bus system? Are they accessible to our residents? And then well-maintained parks. To talk about the green spaces, we have over 2,000 acres of parkland. Of that 2,000 acres, we mow approximately 600 acres. So the rest is really either natural or hard surfaces such as courts, community centers, et cetera. So we do have a lot of natural areas that we are responsible for in maintaining those places. And then also placemaking. And I think you see some of that, especially with how there has been reactions to, for instance, Fish ladder Music Park, to Rotary Park, to the Play Michigan Playground, those areas in the downtown for placemaking. How we have done that in the south end with the connections to the fitness courts that have been placed in there. Really making that a place that people want to be, whether that be at the dog park, it's at Solden Dog Park, or any of that, to be able to have that sense of place in parks. So Park Board also wanted to focus on really five areas that we have there. Connected parks, accessible parks, resilient parks, diversified, and placemaking. And you'll see some goals in there, and again, that's on page 89 of the plan. A little bit more in-depth, talking about goals behind those, I guess, objectives there, behind those five areas or five goals within that. And that was something, some of that is carried over from previous plans, but obviously some of that is upgraded for the new plan because some of it either was accomplished, or we want to carry it over or add new. So then coming to page 92 of the plan, and this is our action plan. This is where we look for, hey, in the next five years, what are we going to try and do in the Parks and Recreation System, especially within the capital improvement projects? So we're usually looking with capital improvement projects for those over $15,000. The one that you see here is the one I mentioned a little bit about before, that we received the grant for. We're going to be improving that Francis Park River Lot, basically above the word Francis and River Lot there. You can see two docks that stick out over the river. This is a very popular location throughout the year for folks to come. There's a lot of fishing that takes place there on the docks. You do have a trail connection there as well. And then you have individuals that just come to the parking lot to eat lunch and just be by the river. So a very popular place, and I think that was seen by the DNR when we made that application for this. And so we're looking forward to upgrading that system, but this is really where we take a look, again, with that action plan of what are the steps that we can take in the future. We're looking at extending the River Trail west of Waverly to be able to connect to our residents that are in the extreme southwest corner, that really have some challenges with some of the sidewalk network there, to be able to connect to the trail. So that's just a small piece, but I think it's going to make a huge impact in terms of how we can connect and connect those folks to the rest of our existing, not only trail system, but park system as well. So that is the presentation that I have. Again, I'd like to thank Spicer for all of their work on this. Spicer has done the five-year plan for the county as well, and I think there's a lot of similarities because we do have a county park here. We do have the trail system and the trails network. And so just to be able to have that connection with this group that has done the master plans before, and especially master plans in this area, has really helped us with that. So that is what I have as far as presentation. I would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Garza?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Mr. Krasinski. Thanks for being here. Good evening. Just real quick, with, you know, how we're having the MODPOD discussions, does that affect this Parks and Recs master plan at all? And my other question would be, would it also affect any future grants if the MODPODs did go into one of the parks?
So as far as the discussion on sites and looking at sites for that, what we would need to do if it does, if a park is selected, we would need to take a look at that as far as change of use, okay? Because it is going from parkland, say, to a campground. Depending on the park, if there is a grant history, for instance, we would need to take a look at that maybe with the DNR. But at this time, I don't have anything that we have decided on a site or a location yet.
I appreciate that. And, you know, my understanding as well is you don't have a site yet either, but I just wondered if that would, if you'd have to change any of this master plan if a city park ended up being the home to the MODPODs?
Yeah, with any of the sites that we pick, we're going to need to take a look at that from a zoning aspect. Obviously, parks would be another aspect that we would need to take as far as the change of use in there. So, yeah, all part of the discussion when we get to that point.
We've got Councilmember Hussein.
Yes, first of all, man, thanks for all you do. I contact you a lot. You're always incredibly responsive. I think your Park Board is very, very responsive. Your staff is responsive, and dealing with things that really are, you know, they might not seem important to some, but they're incredibly important to neighbors. And I think of the graffiti at the tennis courts at Wainwright, or maybe folks driving up to the basketball court at Graves Park, and some of the solutions you implemented with Bollards and things like that over there. So very, very much appreciate that. Also, you know, some of the investments, and particularly in my ward, over the past, you know, several years in terms of the parking lot at Ben Davis, the Fit Pad at Ben Davis, Ingham Park, Disc Golf, I mean, the list goes on, wayfinding signage, park signage, little things that really, really, I think, enhance the vibrancy of parks. So thank you truly for your responsiveness and really your commitment to those things. Couple, just a couple questions with regard to the actual master plan. One of the objectives under the first goal is better connectivity, to expand River Trail, not just within the city, but to also work with regional partners to ensure River Trail connects to regional trails and recreational opportunities. You did speak a little bit about, so I think of the South Lansing Extension, and obviously from, you know, Hawk Island and Maguire Park, we were thrilled to see that. And then from Maguire Park to Waverly, thrilled to see that. You spoke a little bit earlier about expanding west of that, dating back to even my time on the Park Board from 2010 to 2015. We talked a lot about the possibility of connecting Fulton Fine and Hunter's Ridge across the grand to maybe Davis Park and Delta. And so I'm curious where we are at. I do believe your action plan speaks to that. Where are we at with those conversations?
So we just had the application to purchase, and so the first step is to close on the acreage that we have there to get across Waverly. From that, we want to connect to the Waverly Park Apartments, and to be able to make a connection in there. And then, in order to get across Jolly Road, we would need to go through the Mobile Home Park. Those are not city roads. So we would need to have an agreement whereby we can make that connection there. That would get us to Jolly Road. There's an 11-acre piece of property there that then we would need to purchase, or get a permanent easement through. It would be right at the entrance to that Mobile Home Park, so that would then get you on the north side of Jolly. From there, and through that 11 acres, that then connects to the school district property. So from the school district property then would connect into all of our parks that we have there, Fulton Fine and Hunter's Ridge. And then from there, there is a possibility of going across the river into Anderson Park. So your comment, I hope you see how long it takes, and any one of those things that says no...
Right.
...kills the deal. So we need to get, at the very least, we're going to connect to Waverly Park Apartments and to the Mobile Home Park. Done. To make that connection you're talking about, we need permission to go through the Mobile Home Park. We need to have a crossing there on Jolly Road. We need to purchase property on the other side. We need to get with the Lansing School District for permission to go through there to Fulton Fine, Hunter's Ridge, and then big-ticket item would be across the river and into Delta Township. So that's going to take some years.
So it's complicated, but in earnest, you continue to work on it.
It's absolutely possible. It's part of, it's why we do planning.
Right.
Right? You have to have that vision. You have to see that on a map for how that goes, and then you have to be able to take the steps to acquire permission to do that. So, yeah, that is planning 101. That's exactly why that is done. And sometimes, it doesn't work, or it doesn't work now. It could work in the future if we're able to acquire that. But, you know, we've done a very good job with partners like Consumers or the Lansing School District before, with McLaren, and all of those places to be able to extend to the 25 miles we're at now.
Right, right. I appreciate that. In terms of Goal Four, Objective D, it says that you want to partner with the Parks Foundation for Capital Improvement Projects. I'm just curious where, you know, if you have an update on the foundation fundraising efforts, projects that you've supported. I don't feel like we've gotten necessarily a report regarding that.
So you would always like to see the foundation take off and just bring money in?
Right.
I think it has been a struggle for a volunteer board to be able to take that on and to be able to do that. One of the things that we're looking at right now is how could a part-time executive director come in to be able to lead that, whether that is applying for grants that are only available to nonprofits, which they have, to be able to fundraise through events, et cetera. That's something right now we're looking at with the foundation, to be able to have someone to take the lead on that, because having a volunteer board that just takes that on and rips right through it has been difficult.
And I understand that. We were, you know, having the same conversations as part of the Southwest Action Group, right? Volunteer board, some ebb and flow in terms of the time folks can commit, and it was critical to secure funding, to actually bring somebody on to do that work, at least at that part-time rate, but paid to do that work, you know, somebody that could be committed consistently. Certainly appreciate that. In terms of Goal Four, Objective F, dealing with inclusive recreation opportunities, when I read that, I actually remembered, a number of years ago, I thought you were a little bit off your rocker, when you just knew pickleball was going to take off, and I thought, man, this guy's crazy. And you were right, right? Pickleball is, it's an incredible recreational opportunity, absolutely has taken off. People of all ages... is, it's an incredible recreational opportunity. Absolutely is taking off. People of all ages play it. All demographics play it. I'm curious if there are any opportunities forthcoming, because I think of inclusive, inclusivity in our parks in Southwest Lansing. Any discussions about positioning pickleball courts in parks, you know, throughout Southwest Lansing? I know we have one at Quentin Park. It's close. We have one over, maybe off Mount Hope.
Yeah, so our, our next ones that we're looking at are Morse Park, what to do with Quentin Park, because they're very close.
Right.
So we want to redo those courts there. Mar Scott Park, we want to keep basketball courts there. So I don't have a specific site, I would say, in that corner for pickleball.
Right.
But I'm glad to see your interest in it.
And it's, I'm only interested because I'm, I'm hearing of interest from folks.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. People want to know where the pickleball courts are, believe it or not.
So you, you do have indoor with the Schmitt Center.
Right, right. And I, I make sure folks know.
No one else. Well, they have it let's, but otherwise, yeah.
Right. Okay, fantastic. And then Goal Four, Diversify, nope, that's not what I'm looking at. Actually, I'm, Goal Five is what I'm on, Objective A. And it deals with placemaking and small investments on the River Trail. Again, love, love, love the South Lansing Extension. I think it's used, I mean, I use it all the time. And there are walkers and bikers, and there's young families pushing strollers, and grandparents pushing strollers, and folks out there walking dogs. I mean, it's, it's incredible. But one of the things that's obvious is there's not, I mean, there aren't any really amenities on the trail. And I think of anything from benches, I, I think minimal in the way of, you know, wayfinding signage. There's, you know, no bike racks, no bike repair stations. So I, I, even shade trees, right? So I'm just wondering if there's any conversation about maybe enhancing the trail through some of those kind of endeavors.
So one of them that you missed was adding that fitness station there at Davis Park.
Huge, yes, which was huge. And we appreciate that.
So in terms of, much of the trail in your area is along the Consumers right-of-way. So we have to be careful of what amenities we're able to put in there. Certainly, trees would be out.
Right.
But we can take a look at areas that we can enhance along there. Obviously, we have the extension going in that area, and we have a park there that we would be extending it into. And I think there's some opportunities there. There is some low land in that area, so we would need to be careful with that. Bike repair stations is, that, that is another option. It has been difficult for us with the air pump. Those are about $900 a pump, and they have not lasted as long as I think they should.
Right.
And so to replace that, another $900 for a pump just grates me. So we're looking at ways to improve on those bike repair stations. But, yeah, we can take a look in that area for amenities, you know, with the trail system there.
I'm just thinking too, you know, regarding shade trees. I'm thinking of the above-ground infrastructure with regard to the utilities and, and what might be underground. And I would think that, particularly when you look at the positioning of the infrastructure, that there would be, and obviously would be, you know, through consultation, but there would be some opportunity, depending on species, in terms of root systems. I don't know, maybe not. I'm not an expert in that area, but I just, as somebody that is out there often, it gets awfully hot. And there's not really any area for rest. You know what I mean? Okay.
Yeah, it's some, it's something we can take a look at, but, yeah, as you see, the landscape along that entire Consumers right-of-way looks exactly the same.
I know, I know. Okay. A couple of other things. In terms of your action plan, you did talk about, and we've, we've been talking about this since I was on the Parks Board, splash pads. You guys have, I mean, is there any real traction there? If so, where would those go? And of course, I'm advocating for parks in my area. But, yeah, where are we at with that?
I mean, that potential's always there. I think it needs to be a site, it, it really needs to be a site that has a number of things. Number one, do we have traffic going by there where there is that draw? Is it highly visible with that? What do we have as far as those other amenities on there? So it's, it's been a issue finding what I would call the, the best site for that. But I think there is definitely an appetite for splash pads, for, for water play there. We just haven't been able to pinpoint, yep, this is the right site for that.
Okay, that's fair. And then just last, I just want to, you know, continue to put these bugs in your ear. Number one, I would still love, I know we partnered with the school district. It is beautiful, the facility, in terms of the track over there, but would still love at some point to explore the, the opportunity for a walking trail at Willard Walker. And then outside of that, we are going to, those, those Beacon soccer fields are incredible. And I'm not sure what Ferris Park gets in terms of traffic, but the, the one at Beacon South, I mean, it, it is constantly, I mean, at least 60, 70 people. They're, they're even shoveling the snow, right, so that they can play in the winter, which obviously has been a lot of wear and tear on that particular facility. So I'm hoping that we can take a look at that, maybe over the next year or two, next season or two, and, and think about maybe some investments there. The other thing is, the walking trails there are incredible. Love that the Capitol or District Library does the, the story walks there, but that limestone, I don't know if there's a way to go back through there and treat that, but a lot of that is, is up, and, and some of it's trip hazard at this point. So I'm hoping we can look at that, too.
Yeah, I think we look at chemical treatments for that. In terms of the Beacon soccer fields, the, the good news with that is that's use versus abuse. And that's always good to see from a, from a park standpoint, right? Is it's not an abuse situation out there. It's a use situation. We really need to be able to take care of that netting better. That's our number one thing, right? The, the joy of that Beacon field is that you can just rip it as hard as you possibly can. The hard part about that is keeping a system that can actually contain that with those shots. So I haven't noticed the turf issues, but I'll get out there and look. We did a turf replacement at Ferris. So turf was replaced there. I think if we, if we did that again, we would go to a little bit different system, meaning instead of putting in a, a white line, for instance, that is a separate piece, and trying to sew that in, just paint the line. So we don't have seams out there that, that seems to be where we come up with the problems. So, thank you.
All right, do we have any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Vice President Carter.
Yes, I will make a motion for, to set the public hearing for Parks and Recs Recreation, Recreation Master Plan, 2026, 2030, on December 15th.
Okay, proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none.
So just for clarification, so there's going to be a public hearing on the 15th and a vote on the 15th?
Correct.
And the reason for that is this has to be to the DNR by when?
So it has to be to the DNR February 1st.
Okay. Any further? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes unanimously. Thank you Brett and Mike for coming down and giving us a presentation tonight. All right. Next, we are going to move on to Item E, which is a resolution for the city council meeting schedule for 2026. You've got it in front of you. If everyone's had a chance to review this, are there any questions? I don't see any. So Vice President Carter.
I will make a motion for the city council meeting schedule for 2026.
Proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes unanimously. Without any other, oh, Mark?
One of the things, actually Veronica on our staff noticed today, Monday, May 6th, I think maybe Monday, May 4th. 6th is a Wednesday.
So with that, we need to change that date. Do we need...
They need to amend that.
To amend the vote then? Vice President Carter?
Ask.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
I would move to reconsider the last.
Yes, we have to recon, yeah, thank you.
That's right.
All right, so we have a motion to reconsider. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right. And then Vice President Carter.
All right, I will make a motion for the amended of May 4th of the city council meeting schedule for 2026.
Okay, May the 4th be with you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes unanimously. And we are adjourned with no other business at 6:10.